Okay, welcome everyone. Today's date is July 23rd, 2024. Meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Poundridge Library. If I say your name, please say yes. Mary Ellen Walsh? And Manapiga? Jenna Weiss? Selena? Shen?
Hello, yes.
Jennifer Savage?
Yes.
Mike Clark?
Yes.
John?
Here.
Great. And Valerie, I know is coming. She's just gonna be a little late. This is great. We have not only a quorum, but we have almost every board member. Almost every board member. When Valerie comes, we'll have every board member. That's great. Before we get started, do we want to set next month's board meeting? Now, we've been sticking to the third and fourth Tuesdays of every month. So that would either mean the 20th or the 27th. Anyone have a preference?
You know, we could, you know, diverge a little and go to a Wednesday if that works. Like, just to suggest. Obviously can't speak for the rest of the board, but I know that that's the week before Labor Day. I don't know if other people. I just connected that dot, but I am open to week of the 19th.
Okay, how about one through the 21st? Does that work? No. It doesn't work for Selena either. So how about? Okay, how about we do? How about we do the 20th? And Jennifer, I understand that you have an appointment. Does that work for everyone? Jennifer? Okay, how about we do August 20th? Okay? And we don't know about Selena. Be available. I understand. I totally understand. But we still will still have a quorum. So the time, 7:15, does that work for everyone? Yes? John? Okay, how about we do 7:15? Okay? Great, thank you. Okay, let's continue. Do I have approval of June 18th, 2024 board minute meetings?
I move that we approve the minutes from the June 18th, 2024 board meeting.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, moving along. We are going to have an executive session after this. Okay? After our regular meeting. Oh, Ken Gilman, you're up.
Is this on? Okay. Everything's going well around here. As you probably have noticed, there's some been tree trimming above walkways, et cetera, so that people can get in and out of their cars and then out at the library a little bit easier. Tony Lepino's people have been doing a good job at that. Somebody brought up that the steps leading up to the upper parking lot, the front edge of them is not painted. And that we were wondering why it wasn't. And so this was something that I have a feeling was probably painted many, many years ago and it's just faded away over the years. So I will bring it before the board and you all can decide if you think that it's something that is necessary. For what strange reason, I don't know, other than if they.
I think the painting, it wasn't me who brought it up, but I've seen it in places. The painting, it lights up at night, like at nighttime, you can see it if it's a white or a yellow. I don't know what color, but I have seen it in other facilities, other places. And it does, I think it does help, actually.
Well, if you'd like it to be done.
I don't know if we ever had it before.
We did.
Okay.
We did many, 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 many years ago. It, like Ken said, it's very faded, if it's even there at all.
It's just like a little, like one.
At least one step, I know, has a little bit on it.
Yeah, no, we did many years ago. When I first started using this library 20 something years ago, it was pretty evident.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Any other comments?
Well, if you'd like it done, I can make sure that it gets done.
Okay, what does everyone feel? Okay. Okay, great. Okay, let's get it done.
Okay, well, get it done. That's real.
It's always better to go with safety.
I prefer white rather than yellow, but.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say so that we have no conflict unless you want, what would you like? White, yellow?
I think white matches better than yellow.
Is there a kind of paint that's kind of fluorescent reflective kind of thing?
I would think we can get a fluorescent white as well as certainly a yellow, I know, but we'll, we'll find a white that'll go in the dark, I guess, say. Or with the lights that we do have with the LEDs, certainly people will be able to see it. That's all I have right now. Anybody have any questions?
How's the pipe working that we had repaired in the back? We've had some pretty heavy rains lately.
When I've been by there, one would not know that it rained.
Okay, great.
Okay, so.
I'm talking about the easement. It really was flooding out back there. Okay, great.
Ken, I know you mentioned that tree trimming was going on and I honestly, I didn't get a chance to look around, but I know that when I walked down from the upper lot, there was a tree on the right that was really hanging low. Is that one that was, that we're gonna trim? It was literally touching the ground, the branches, where Ari Fleischer is putting his, that tree. That tree needs to be trimmed.
From the upper lot?
So if I'm walking from the upper lot to my, coming down towards the library, the one on the right, immediately on the right.
Yeah, that's Ari Fleischer's.
Walkway?
No, it's on, it's on the lawn.
It's on the lawn.
But it's really.
But it does hang over. It's Ari Fleischer's one there.
And I think there was one branch that was actually broken. And so it.
I'll take a look at it and get Tony to take care of it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Ken? Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Okay, Treasurers' Report, Michael?
Report is really unchanged and most of the balances are unchanged. I can only say that dealing with Chase Bank is a totally different experience than dealing with Signature Bank and dealing with Key Bank. And so I have been going back and forth, back and forth, trying to get another CD. And it takes usually about a week to 10 days for them to respond. And then there's another thing that they want to have done. So the CD work for the savings to get another $200,000 CD is still a work in progress. Other than that, I'll take any questions about it.
Any questions? For Mike? No? Okay, moving right along. Has everyone seen the warrants? It's in our folder. I just have one question for Jen, and I'm so sorry I did not email you prior to this. The Mack Construction Company miscellaneous repairs, was that, we had like the drainage thing? Yeah. So that was the ceiling tiles over here, right in the corner? Okay. Oh, that's right. That's right. And they fixed everything in there too, right? Okay, great. Yeah, I did see the bill. And then the pipe on the boiler, like. Okay, because I was gonna say we have a new boiler, so obviously that's not covered. Figures. Okay, great. Anything else with that? Any, do we have any other repairs that need to be done? Okay, good. Here?
The nonfiction room.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. As usual, say thank you very much to Phil. Any other questions or warrants? No, do we have any? Is this it? $57,500? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve $57,575.85?
I make a motion to approve the warrants of $57,575.85.
Second.
Who seconds? Selena? All in favor? Aye. Great. Mike, you'll make the appropriate adjustments?
Yes.
Okay, great. So they're approved? Okay, moving right along. We have committee updates. I was gonna, do you want to do that in your Director's Report? Okay.
Good. Because my update was Jennifer and I met and spoke about the budget.
Great.
So I just wanted to say, feel comfortable how it was built up and we went over kind of each line and we went through everything. So she did a great job, but just wanted the boards to know.
Great. Thank you to both of you. And I know Mike Clark, I saw some of the emails going through. And I also saw, you know, Mike Lewis. So thanks to everyone who worked on this budget. Jen, I guess in her Director's Report, you'll go through the budget. John?
I just have one other question, Jennifer, the audit. Where is that?
I got an update. So I reached out to Mike Lewis and I think Mike Clark, and I think maybe you were on the email too. Our August meeting, so that's August 20th, we are going to have the audit. The audit company will be here.
I know I missed the first five minutes. August 20th, I will be moving my son into college, so I cannot be here at that date, just so you know.
The, the audit, though, I'd like, as soon as we get that, I'd like to see it before we have the August meeting. So whenever that comes in, which hopefully isn't the 19th, we should distribute that so we can take a look at it before.
Okay, I'll shoot out an email to Mike Lewis. And we'll make sure that we get it into, oh, Mike. Okay, Mike Clark will send out an email to Mike Lewis, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Monetary gifts, who's doing that?
It's not my policy, I mean, I'm the Governance Committee, but Finance Committee did monetary gifts policy as well as investments, but I think Mike Clark had some suggested changes on the investments policy, if I'm correct, Mike? But I don't know if monetary gifts, if folks are okay with, with the draft.
What we have up on the board there is the investment policy. And what I noticed was that it didn't quite jive with the current procedures. So Valerie had made some comments and I added some comments about the actual bank deposits and CDs. It's something that the Treasurer has been doing. So I added some comments that Jennifer added here to add the, that the Treasurer is involved in that. That was what I added.
Okay, I mean, is. So are we voting on this then?
I don't think we, I'm not sure we can, because first of all, there's, there's comments in it that we need to either accept them or not, right? So if you start at the beginning, under scope, this is just a Valerie governance issue. I don't like using words like, we have a very tight restrictions. Who knows if they're very tight? Whose definition of very tight? So I just say we have restrictions, we follow the law. And then the second comment I made was, all funds the library's control, and then there's a parenthetical. But if we already said all, all funds, I don't know, you know, my view was we don't need a parenthetical because that's just one example of a, of a fund. And so I took that out. And then I think, like I said, I haven't relooked at it, John, since we got Mike's comments just a little while ago, to see where to add, you know, based on Mike's feedback. So I don't know if you have thought about that yet.
It's fine. I know we've been kicking this around now a couple of meetings, and so at some point then we have to just close, close it and just say it's there. So I saw your comments, but I guess I would have just said, let's accept your comments if we're gonna do it live here and vote for it. But we can wait until it's fully baked and, and kick it to next month if we have to.
Mike Clark?
Personally, I, I think that it really doesn't add anything other than keep it consistent with what we're already doing. So I'm, I'm okay with going with it as it is.
Yeah, and I'm okay accepting your comments, Valerie, and like your comments.
I am too. Board? Agree. Okay, so if everyone approves, I need a motion for someone to approve the investment policy, monetary gifts to the library policy.
I motion to accept the investment policy.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So we're gonna accept it with the change.
And then if, did the monetary policy work the same way? We can, we put that up and just go through it if that's okay?
Yep.
And bang this out? We can table that if you want. We can table this one. All right.
Let me just express that as, as a revised document based on, from what we had, I've expressed my concerns before about our relationship to the foundation and how it's expressed or not expressed in this document. So I, I would personally prefer to table this until we've had a more fruitful discussion with, with them before we do this.
I agree. Are we in agreement?
I agree completely.
Okay. Okay. So why don't we put this on the back burner? And let's move forward.
Can I just ask a quick question? Who should this? Whose purview does this fall under? This one in particular? Or is it?
What do you mean? The, just that policy?
Yes.
Finance Committee.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
So, but just as the Chair of the Governance Committee, I review every policy that goes through. So I actually have scheduled a meeting with a few members of the Foundation on Friday. So hopefully we'll know a little bit more from that meeting.
Got it. Thanks.
I also read somewhere in the Dropbox that this policy, or maybe all policies, I don't know, would be reviewed again in five years.
It depends. So we have, some are two, some are three, some are five. It all depends on the policy itself.
Okay.
And so my suggestion is anyone who's drafting a policy or updating a policy should include their recommended timeframe of how often they think it should be reviewed.
I thought that was a little lengthy, you know?
A lot of those are five years.
Oh, they are?
I mean, you know, there's certain things that just don't change. It doesn't mean you can't look at it sooner.
But this one, because of what was going on, I thought five years was a little bit too long.
Yeah. Again, we can always look at something sooner, but at least you want a schedule of, and yeah, Jennifer just threw up the schedule.
Okay.
Just as FYI, what we just approved has an annual review.
Right.
For the investment policy.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that might be the only one, Mike, that's annual. Most of them are, as you can see up here, some are even seven years. You know?
Okay.
All right, one other thing. We, after these two policies, every single policy has been reviewed in the last, I think most of them this year or last year. So we're up to, up to date.
I think in the last two years, we've covered every single thing.
One second. Just kudos to Jennifer Coulter for bringing all of these policies to our attention and keeping us on the ball.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer. So now we go to Public Relations, Jenna Weiss.
Jennifer, so and another thank you to Jennifer. I just want to call out that we were able to connect the recorder.
I saw.
Yeah, so great. And Jennifer actually oversaw the entire opportunity to run an ad or several ads on their beta site, which means that it's running at no charge to the library. And just in under a week, we can refresh these, of course. There were almost 600 clicks over to the library from, from these ads. So it's really great. I think it's, you know, showcasing the opportunity at hand and we're very excited to explore what could be next with them. We're just speaking about what that could look like. And yeah, if anyone has thoughts or ideas, obviously the children's room is top of mind for something we would want to kind of work closely with them on. But yeah, that's about it.
Now, are they, I don't see them, they were here, I think, at the last meeting online. I don't see them here. The recorder. I think they were, they tuned into our last meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe we should always remind them when a meeting is.
Yes. They, they know, so we'll just continue to, yeah, warm up that.
I did see a byline by Neil Rents, so I don't know whether he will be assigned to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Neil was our reporter before, so he's very familiar with the library, he's very familiar with our, you know, our phone numbers and how he can contact any of us for comment and stuff like that. I actually have Neil's number, so I'll.
Great. I'm in our sense also is just that, yeah, we'll have to work with them on, on what that could look like. Yeah, because they're new and up and coming, but hopefully they'll start to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenna and Jennifer. Thank you. Program Development, Selena?
Hi, everybody. I think things have been going well. The one thing I wanted to raise was, I know that we've continued to have the back and forth of the parking lot and the, some of the music classes. And Alan brought to my attention that there are some libraries that do have policies about vendors working outside under certain heat and temperature conditions. So I just wanted to raise that. I don't have, and Alan, if you want to speak to this or if you know off the top of your head which libraries, because I know you had mentioned that, okay, that's fine. But I just wanted to consider that if we wanted to create some kind of a threshold, because I know we had talked about it in the past, but I had gotten some questions from patrons about like how we decide. And I know that in some cases, if we're able to kick it over and say this is a vendor requirement, it gives us a little bit of air cover.
Yeah, I thought Kurt did have a requirement, 85 or above, he won't work outside. Am I correct? I thought he did.
Kurt will not perform if it's 85 or above. Bedford Academy Music will not perform if it's 83 or above. And then as far as, well, when we get, when it gets cold, they also have temperatures.
Yeah. Somewhere I had read Kurt's thing too, where I remember reading about his requirements. So yeah.
I mean, it's just helpful to, to have that language so that we can sort of direct people there and have an upper and lower limit there. So I just wanted to raise it for, for the board's awareness.
Okay, great.
I guess my question would be, is there any place on our website generically? I would hate to add another policy, but I think you could, we could add something that says our vendors, you know, have, we have relationships or contracts or agreements with our vendors and they set the, the lower and higher limits on weather.
Would we want to say what those limits are?
I don't know, because they're different.
Because they change.
Right. Yeah. And we comply with them and leave it at that. I mean, I mean, my God, I hope people are smart enough that they think it's too hot, they stay home.
Well, it's more than that. It's the, well, because parking is an issue, so outdoors is easier, but, you know.
Yeah.
So maybe, Jennifer, it's something that you and I can pick up and just kind of like think about if we would put it on the website, where it would go and how we would kind of phrase that. Does that sound okay?
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else, Selena? That's it. No? Okay, Human Resources, Dan?
Hi. I have a very pleasant announcement. Hannah is officially hired as Librarian One at the Poundridge Library. Okay. And Bonnie had already made an announcement for executive session, so that would be my, we need an HR issue also later. Bye.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ann. Moving right along, John? Long plant? Long range planning?
No update.
Okay. This is exciting, guys. Children's room refresh, Jennifer Savage.
Yay.
And if, if anyone goes into Jennifer Coulter's office, you will see no less than 10 to 15 sample colors.
You're attacked by green, the color green.
Are all the carpet samples still there? Because that was taking up the entire. So Jennifer, do you want to start with our selections and then go into the budget?
Okay.
Okay. So you'll see here, well, let me open that document because I have the budget.
We've, you know, made a whole lot of progress. We've gone through, as you know, many, many different options for shelving and for carpet and for making, you know, the tree canopies in the room. And so what we've decided thus far is to pull together kind of a, a collaboration of different vendors and different pieces. So we will go with CLC for some pieces and then we, we are going to probably order furniture from Wayfair and then, you know, bring in a painter and bring in someone to actually build our tree canopies. So if you can, if you see all this, Jennifer, do you want to go up to the, you want to start here? Okay. So we've decided on this curved shelving, and I don't know if everybody can see where this is or if you're looking on your computers, how, you know, where that will actually go in the library. It's like, it adds a little whimsy. It's just, it's cute. It's nicer. And then also, these browsing boxes, which I think Jennifer can really speak to also, we're really excited about that because it really makes the, it makes the books really accessible to the kids, the way it's laid out that way, front facing, their height, you know, very easy to organize. So all of that, and we'll note, and I know that we've said this before, that, you know, with this new shelving, we will have to do a little bit of a, you know, kind of a purging of a bunch of books because we won't be able to fit everything. But Jennifer can also speak to that. There's some, there's some old, way older publications that shouldn't be a problem to actually, you know, get rid of. And then moving on, so these are the, you know, tree canopies that we will have built. The idea is to have them around the computer tables, like you can see right here. And then what's next? These are the adult chairs that we found. We really like this pattern. I mean, it's, there's a million fabrics we could choose from. They're really cost efficient and hopefully comfortable bench also.
So, and again, I'm not on the committee. We had picked a lot of vinyl fabrics. Is this vinyl so it can easily be wiped down?
Okay. I mean, we went through quite a bit of.
I did the main library selection picking.
Chair searching.
Ann and I spent the whole day with Jennifer picking all the colors.
I am sure.
One thing that you might be able to do when they come in is like spray them with Scotch gard or something like that. And that might, I mean, the good news is if they're so much cheaper, if you have to replace them every whatever years, it might not be the end of the world. But I agree, if there's anything we can do besides putting, you know, plastic wrap on them, that we could try to make sure they last longer, that would be a good thing.
No, that's a great idea. That's, that's definitely something that, that's definitely something we can do. And we're, you know, we're choosing darker colors too, so, you know, it won't be. Let's add Scotchgard to the budget. Anyway, as we were talking about before, if you've been in Jennifer's office, you can see the massive amount of carpet samples we've gone through. So we've chosen something pretty, you know, just pretty neutral and accessorizing with these throw rugs. And some of these throw rugs are already in the room. They're, they're soft, they're adorable, they fit really well with the theme. These are all the different versions. These are some Ottomans that were also, did they come yet?
Yeah, they're, they're here. They're here.
Oh, no. Okay, well, I hope we don't feel like we need to replace them anytime soon. That's fantastic.
I saw them in the warrants. How many did we end up getting? 14? Okay, that's.
It might be fun to do some type of event where like children who are attached to, or people in need can come to the library and like get the old things. I think you might have done this.
That's a great idea.
We did.
Like the beanbags, my son loves those, right beanbags, he's going to be devastated.
Jennifer was really good when we did the.
The purposing is even, is great, thanks.
I just got the quotes today and yesterday from Nancy at CLC and from the painter slash carpenter who's going to be doing the custom made stuff, so these numbers are now firm and exact. Though the carpet, I don't think Jen heard, the carpet that we chose is no longer being made. So we're back on looking for the one, it's not going to, we're going to get it done, but the point is that the number that we put in for carpet, he has promised to honor.
Oh, that's great, that's great.
Even if we do something that's, you know, more expensive, he said he will honor this price. So these numbers, we've already purchased the Amazon Ottomans, the throw rugs, and everything else is, you know, the, the quotes are in, in the box. So CLC did come out to be the least expensive option, and we're really pleased to be working with them again.
I just had one question about the paint.
Yes.
On the ceiling. We've had a couple of instances where we've had to replace ceiling tiles. And so I worry a little bit about putting clouds up, because redoing that will be challenging. I also wondered if it wasn't worth buying ten extra ceiling tiles and have them painted blue at the same time, so that we at least have them, instead of having to call a painter back and repaint one ceiling tile. But I also just wanted to throw out there, I love the idea of painted clouds, but if a ceiling, if a ceiling tile leaks, you now have to get a painter back in.
I don't think they're going to be Michelangelo clouds. They're going to be like something that you could draw yourself, kind of cloud.
All right. I just, just wanted to throw it out there as something to think about, because like the last thing you want to do, that's, I'm, I'm just saying, to think something else, because to repaint this, you know, could be.
I think the extra ten tiles is a fantastic idea, yeah. I mean, I have extra tiles, but they're not painted, so.
I think we could look, we could look at decals and see, that's a great idea.
Great idea.
Yeah, because I asked about the ceiling tiles, because when Mac had the outbreak, that's why I asked Jennifer about what ceiling tiles, because it was, I thought the ceiling tiles were pricey, they are pricey.
Anyway, and then we talked about, so this is the, the cost that we were talking about, the, we are able to finance this ourselves with our budget for two thousand twenty-four. And as far as I didn't really want to, I was curious about with the foundation, how long they were considering, how long their fundraising efforts would go. I'm, I'm concerned that they're going to stop making the chairs, like they stopped making the carpet, like they stopped making, you know, that kind of thing. What are we supposed to do if they don't hit their target goal? Will they take that from their savings? What are you supposed to say to people who've already donated? And then they're not spending that money. I have a lot of concerns about that. And like I said, we can finance it ourselves.
I, I know we wanted to have this discussion. I'm wondering if we need to table the discussion until after your meeting, Valerie, on Friday?
Well, I think it depends, because if the board's perspective is, we would go ahead with this regardless of whether we get funding, then I think we go forward and someone makes a motion that we approve this, and we'll deal with the foundation separately based on that conversation. The, or if people say, no, I don't want to fund this, we think the foundation should, then we have to wait till that.
I'm in favor of funding it ourselves and see how much the foundation gives us. I'd be also willing to go up to maybe seventy-eight thousand dollars. Give a couple extra thousand dollars for extra ceiling tiles and anything else that comes in.
We probably will need an electrician, because we're going to be moving the electrical source from the center of the room to the two smaller ones, but they can be run through the ceiling tiles, down through the columns and into the floor. It should not be a big project at all. It's not like trenching or anything like that. So yeah, I would definitely throw in another twenty-five hundred, just, you know, make it eighty even or something like that.
Yeah, or maybe, yeah. I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to giving a budget of eighty thousand. Board thoughts?
I agree.
And then, any other, yeah, do I?
Because they were going to reimburse us the cost anyway.
Put out a motion?
I know you said, Jennifer, that we can do it in the budget, and I believe you. But I was wondering if there was anything that you think is impacted by that decision?
No, the opposite. When I tried to schedule it so that the two thousand twenty-five would be, because they say that they want us to provide some sort of matching funds, that was messing with my two thousand twenty-five budget. I've got it this year. I'd really rather spend it this year.
Okay. Yeah, I think it started with the conversation that she, we actually had, had the money.
Can we confirm that the finance committee is also on board?
Uh, I'm a hundred percent on board. And
Great.
I'll go one step further. We're only going to do projects that we can afford unless we have a firm commitment from whoever it is that wants to help, because it's impossible to do the timing and the materials and the commitments and the vendors to make it work. So we have it, we can do it. And by the way, we have, you know, other general, general operational thing, you know, reserve that we can dip into for other projects that may come up that go outside the current year budget. But I'm fully in favor of, of doing this for eighty.
That was the comment that I wanted to make. If I'm correct, this number hits right to what you project the budget to be, for the surplus.
That's right.
So I wonder whether it might do well to tap into our general fund, some of the endowments, and then give us a little bit of a cushion. And we're not talking about a lot of money, but, you know, maybe so that we set a budget for now at, let's say, sixty thousand, and think of twenty thousand out of the endowments, and then work from there based on what you find. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I think it's a fine suggestion, but that's also cash flow. So we're committing to do the spend, and we'll commit to do it. Where we get that? I think we could either take it from operational or take it from the capital accounts, and it's a great idea. And it could be what matures or some kind of other liquidity. But I, I think, not completely separate, but that's, that's a different issue.
Great. If you can just sign this for me, Bonnie, this is for the shelving, we can get that into the.
So do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we set a budget of eighty thousand dollars to fund the renovations to the children's room as laid out by, by the committee.
I second.
All in favor? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. For, so many people have had a hand in this, thank you, especially to the committee. I know how hard it is to pick out colors. I know everyone's opinion matters, and I know there's a lot of compromising going on.
It's going to look spectacular. I was talking about it with Jenna. I thought we should have a profile done in one of the magazines or something like, I think we're going to have the best children's room in the whole county.
That's great. Thank you, everyone. So parking improved, parking bound.
Okay, there's actually updates on the parking improvement project. So I have finally talked to the engineer, Jason, after numerous times of reaching out. So we had a really quick conversation last week. His concerns when he goes back and reads the DTS report were twofold. One is that DTS used two numbers. One was one point five percent growth of use of, of the facility, and he only goes to twenty twenty-five, the year twenty twenty-five. And then the second is, in his report, he talks about an additional ten egresses and, and ingress and egress into our parking lot. And so Jason interprets that, and the engineer interprets that to mean that we're only asking for ten parking spots, which is not what the DTS was trying to do. He believes there are inconsistencies in DTS's report, mostly around site distance, when you make a left out of the parking lot. So he believes that his report is contradictory. His example is that they measured, field measure of site distance was two hundred feet at thirty miles per hour. They recommend three ninety, but when they wrote their report, they said the average speed was forty miles per hour. So therefore, you actually need a greater site distance, and that's not in the report. So anyways, so those are kind of what he, that would be what he would say at a planning board meeting, right? And he actually said to me, he would have expected a traffic report to say, you can add thirty more spots with no impact and blah, blah, right? And that's not what this traffic report says. So I left a message for Brian Dempsey at DTS. We have not connected yet. Jason at the town engineer has agreed to meet with DTS and me to go through all of that. That might take the place of the one planning board meeting that DTS offered for, you know, for part of our package. So I think first, before I do that, I'd like to know that the board wants me to go forth in that way. And then if there were any planning board meetings that would come out of this, we would be paying DTS, which we all knew that would potentially happen as well. So that's kind of where we stand. Questions? Oh, and we'll go to that, your picture next, Jennifer.
I mean, I'm supportive of that. I think this is our due diligence, right? This is what we're doing. So if we can get them together in a room, that's what we should do.
I, I agree. I think it will be more valuable to have them in a room together than save DTS for a planning board meeting.
Anybody else have a view?
Did they give you any side hint of what they would actually tolerate in terms of extra space?
This is just the engineer, the town engineer. So what he's basically saying, which, I mean, look, I've, I don't know what, I'm, I'm a little surprised he's saying what he's saying, given that he's the one that recommended this company, and you would have thought he would have seen his reports millions of times. So the fact that the, what's in the report is inconsistent with what Jason would have expected was a little surprising to me, to be honest, especially because I know Bonnie and I talked before I called DTS, and DTS knew what we wanted to do. So you would think if that's what the planning board expected, that DTS would have done that. But obviously, I haven't talked to them yet. So no, there's no, nothing at all about what they think we can do.
I'm in favor of the meeting as long as it doesn't cost the library any money, to be honest with you, because.
Surprise.
Yeah, what a surprise from me. Keeping in mind that, you know, cost to, to do this driveway now has gone up, you know, more than when, when our estimates came the first go around. But as long as it's not costing us any money, I agree with Jennifer, we should do our due diligence and see where it plays out. I mean, I, I did have the shrubs, so I did have the shrubs of the sightlines, the left-hand turn, trimmed from Lupino last year, and I did get residential approval from those homes. I think one or two of them has turned over, so we'd have to go back and ask those residents. I wouldn't want to step on their property without asking. But I had before DTS came, and it's a simple thing, you just go with a weed whacker, because those weeds really, I mean, that's part of the site problems. But it's one of many. There's a big tree there. There's a big pole there. But, you know, that's my only comment. I mean, we can clear, as long as we get neighbor approval, we could always clear, have Lupino just go up there and weed whack every time he comes, as long as we talk to the neighbors again.
All right. So my plan is to go forward and ask DTS if they'll meet with Jason and me in our original agreement. And if, if he won't without getting paid, then we'll wait until I come back to the board.
First meeting, we're thinking would be like complimentary? Is that like, was part of the?
So DTS had said that they would attend planning board meeting, that was part of the contract that we signed.
Okay.
So hopefully, you know, he's not going to expect any money either.
Okay. All right, thank you.
This could be the planning board meeting, or maybe he'd just do it gratis, because, we don't, we don't know. And, and still attend a planning board meeting. Okay, great. Yeah, so Valerie can go, and we're excited to hear what happens, and hopefully it's going to go very smoothly. Or, or you can send us an email. We just went through. Okay, director's report, I say.
Sorry. So the only other thing related to the parking lot is there was a letter written by a neighbor to Kevin Hanson complaining about employees overflow parking on the sides of the driveway. The map is up there. We have confirmation from both the planning.
Jim Perry.
Jim Perry, sorry, I know it's.
Who's the building department?
Building inspector, sorry, I know, I, I stopped myself, from the building inspector and from the chief of police in, in a, in a written police report, that that is our land and that we have every right to park there. So, so we will communicate that with Mr. Pierce and see what happens next.
So we are using, I think you guys saw my email when I was away, we're using across from Mr. Pierce's off, house, right across from, if you go down the easement road, right across from his house is really nice piece of property, which we could head on, put, put employee cars head on. The only thing is that there's no lighting back there, but when we have Kurt, again, our musical munchkins, where we have to bring it in-house instead of having it outside, it's great for the employees to park down there. And it is our land, and it will, you know, it will ease up, you know, three spots, four spots, however many employees are working that day, which is great. So that's, you know, four extra spots we get.
Yeah, and I just had Jennifer print a piece of paper that said employee, you know, employee car, whatever, so that it's in the windshield, so he knows that it's us. Not that it matters, we technically could have a patron park there if we really wanted to, but, but we won't go there. And so again, that employees know that they can park there when we need the overflow parking.
Yeah, and Jennifer and I have walked down there. There is spots on the side of the road. I, everyone knows I drive a little Audi. There are rocks in there, so I've, you know, I'm hesitant about using that until we get Lupino or something in there, because if you do have a low car like mine, it does bottom out on the side. Lupino, and see what we can do about maybe even getting more spots, as long as there's no rocks or anything. But the one safe area I know for sure is across from Mr. Pierce's house. Any questions?
So what we're saying is for now, we, we would like the employees to go all the way down and park across from Mr. Pierce's driveway and not, not use the, the grass along the way, or what? What?
No, I, I think if they feel comfortable parking there
Right.
on the side, I think that's fine. They know their cars. They, they, they should look at it during the daylight to, to Bonnie's, you know, point, so they have to understand there are rocks there, et cetera. And if they don't feel comfortable, then we can have that conversation.
Okay. I was also led to understand, though, if, if there's an overflow of, of people attending an event, patrons could park there too?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, legally, yes.
Okay. Jennifer's saying yes.
Yeah, legally, yes. I, I don't know that we want to go that route, but legally, yes.
Just where the overflow parking, where those little cars are right now, is where I've been directing the, the overflow for the patrons and for the employees. I don't want to send them all the way down to this area here. Unless we absolutely need to. Yeah, we've gained four or five spots. I also asked Lupino to price out, I asked him what we could do to, you know, maximize the parking along both sides, and he suggests that we, I forget the word that he used, but basically compress it, so it's not grass and sort of make it like the dirt road is on either side. And I said, just, you know, give us some prices, whether we go through with it or not. But as you can see, this is all of our property on either side of the dirt road, all the way back, you know, plenty of room, so.
What's the red line?
That's the easement. It goes through the woods. I've always thought that the easement went through the dirt road. It goes through the woods and out through the.
So, so that's where we were going to do our new driveway. So the red, Mr. Pierce owns twenty-five feet, he's got that, that's his easement, and then Mrs. Carmichael, Mr. and Mrs. Carmichael own twenty-five feet. So there's actually fifty feet of easement. They, I think it was dated in nineteen seventy-something, they gave up that right for that easement, because we do provide egress-aggress for them. So as long as we do that, we could use their easement. That's the nineteen seventy-something agreement.
Which I found in the new digital archives.
You did, thank you. Which I've read from cover to cover, so, you know, with the parking lot. So again, they, they give up that, the red line, and so when we were going to do the new parking lot, if you see the red line, if you see the upper lot and the red line, we were going to have them, not exactly the way the red line is, but we were going to use some of their easement.
So just so I understand, where, where's Pierce then? Is he parcel four? Is he right across from them?
Yes, he's there. Mrs. Carmichael's straight ahead. And then they don't have access, but their, their pool and their tennis court on Westchester Avenue is the access, but if you go down right in the yellow where the cars are parked, if you notice there's property over there on the left, they don't have a driveway on our access road. They have a driveway in Westchester, but their property abuts us.
Right. So the. Right, so the, the green is, everything inside the green is, is ours?
Correct.
Okay. So we're just parking on our own property? So we don't have to refer, refer to across from Pierce or not across from Pierce. It's on our property. And if they're going to allow us to then compact it or make it more suitable to park in the overflow, I say we do it. And that's about it, right?
We're getting prices right now to strike the lot. I know we put it off because we thought we were paving, but we've kind of waited a really long time. We did have some striping that was done when we were going before the planning board. That was, you know, temporary, for lack of a better word. I do expect some, you know, disagreement with how we strike, but such is life.
Yeah, we did, Lawrence Construction is the one that temporarily did the striping. So when I went from the planning board, Jim Perry came up beforehand. And we did lose two spaces from the striping, but that's his job. And we, the upper parking lot, when we striped, we kind of did it differently than, than the way it originally was. And so that's what happened. One of the reasons why we didn't go ahead with the striping was because we are going to lose a couple of spaces. But we've gained now a couple of spaces, so maybe it will be a wash. Again, the only reason why we lose spaces is because Jim Perry did physically bring up a fire truck. He is our fire marshal and he couldn't, where Jennifer used to park in the back on each side, he couldn't swing the fire truck around. And he has the final say. We don't, but he does, okay? Just to let everyone know. Anything else about the parking? Okay, let's move on. Director's report.
There is one thing that I wanted to mention, and that's that we're about to get our agreement for IT services provided by Westchester Library System. They announced that they will be increasing the price to lease each desktop from 900 per year to 1,100 per year. They have a five-year lifespan, so we're paying $5,500 per computer. I think that's outrageous. And I am getting pricing to look for outside vendors to provide the services. There's a whole list of them. I'll, I'll, I'll present it when I have more information, but.
What do the other libraries do?
That's the thing. About five of them have jumped ship with IT. And I've spoken to all of them and gotten the names of the people that they've worked with and they're all happy with the respective ones. So I'll have five different proposals for you. I would really prefer to work with someone local. Bedford and I think Austin, and work with someone who's out of Chicago. And they said they really like it all, but I, I would really rather have someone. So I have some coming in from Mount Kisco tomorrow. I spoke with someone in White Plains and there's another one in Brewster. So it would be my preference to keep the business local and have someone in case they do need to run over.
Can you give a quick overview of what the, what their package entails, generally speaking? What services are they providing?
Oh, okay, so it would be the one thing that we have to keep. So the, the total thing that we do with WLS is called an SLA, the Service Level Agreement, and we can get things à la carte. So the ones they provide is the ILS, and that's our membership into, you know, using their mainframe. So that's on, there's device support and maintenance, there's email support, there's the, you know, there's, it's all broken down and everything. And the ones that we can eliminate is everything except the mainframe connection. And that's what I'm looking to price. I don't believe we would have tremendous savings the first year because we're going to have to purchase the equipment. But every year thereafter, I'm looking at savings of 5,000 to 8,000, I think, per year. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, that's big savings.
Definitely significant. It's, I just, when I heard that the price was going to be 1,100 per desktop per year, I, I just, that's outrageous. Email support as well. But it's just, you have to figure in the cybersecurity and the licensing for Google and Office 365 and just a bunch of other factors. And I'm going to be coming to you, Selena, because this is not my area of expertise. But they've been very good about explaining the breakdown on the proposals and everything. And they're more than willing to speak to the, the tech committee and.
Great. I think my only thing would just be that whoever we go with, I would obviously want them to have experience working with libraries and local, small-town libraries. So that's really the most important thing to me, yeah.
Great, okay, so I'm looking forward to presenting that information for you. Next meeting, the WLS SLA agreement won't be available until the end of August. I'll see if I can nudge him to get it a little bit sooner. We have to sign with them by October 1st if we decide to use them. And then the cut over would be January 1st, so plenty of time. Okay, so then jumping on to the 2025 budget again, thank you to John Cristiano for sitting with me and going through it line by line. I've worked on this very extensively with Mike Lewis and Heidi Nardelli. We're all very confident with the numbers. Some significant changes that we made were, are highlighted in green here. The broker's fee, John thought that the Westchester Financial Advisors number might be closer to 7,500. I checked with Heidi. She again said she was quite confident with the 5,000 number, but there's room if we want to move some stuff around. The significant changes where I jumped, where is it? Programming. I increased programming for adult from 60 to 65 and from children's to 42 to 45. And I think those numbers are good. I just, I'm so pleased with the way that everything's going. And we're going to just hit right at the top of our numbers this year. And I think if we just had a little bit more wiggle room, we can put in some really significant, great additional programs. I've also increased the budget for eBooks and audiobooks from, for eBooks. I'm sorry, I've decreased adult print books from 19,500 to 15,000. This is due to the fact that eBooks and audiobooks are so popular now. Print books tend to run about $30 a book. eBooks tend to run about $60 a book. And audiobooks tend to run about $90 a book. So we really needed to put some more money towards that. Our materials budget, so books, electronics, et cetera, et cetera, is, is going to be about 10% of our budget, whereas a year or two ago, it was about 3% of our budget. So we're moving in the right direction. And this is a trend that is throughout all of the Westchester libraries. The Public Library Directors Association is recommending that we follow the same numbers that I've recommended for this budget.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in a pretty big book club, Jennifer knows, and half of our members now are on digital. Where I could say about a year ago, I'd say about only 20 or 30% of our members were. So that's where, that's where it's all going.
I did increase the PR budget from 2,000 to 3,000, based on conversations with Jenna. And I did not fund the facilities number again, and you can talk about that. Again, investigating alternatives for technology. I bumped up, I moved technology because we're going to drop base, whatever, for the archives. We've managed to download all of that information and put into a Google Drive, so that's all good. And everything else is pretty much staying the same. Did anyone have any questions on, on the budget?
I, I thought it was great. I liked Mike Lewis's suggestions. I thought your, your suggestions were great. I totally agree with digital. That's where we really have to spend the money.
Definitely.
It's a big number, but I know that you had explained it to me a while ago, how expensive digital is. I was pretty shocked. Right, $90, I was shocked, but that's where we need to be.
Absolutely. And surprisingly, audiobooks are more popular than eBooks in this town. Not that way in every town, but it is for ours. And that's pretty much it that I have for the budget.
Any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Does everyone feel comfortable in presenting this budget to our residents? Okay. Do we need a motion to approve the budget? Do I have a motion? If there's no other questions?
I motioned to approve the 2025 budget.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Great, so this budget will, it's, it's our September budget. And thank you, everyone who worked on it. And once again, we are not raising taxes. So, you know, always spread that word. This is, I think, our seventh year we haven't raised taxes, so it's great. We're, we're living within our means, which is wonderful.
Who do we actually send this to? The town?
Well, if, if we were to.
The residents can see it on our, on our website?
Yes, the minute we approve the budget, it goes on our website. We do have inquiries from time to time and people do go on our website and look at it. And we do sometimes get an email here and there. But yes, it goes on our website. The only other thing I have to ask Jennifer, is that the end of your director's report? So I, how, how are the trustees? I see that we're blasting it on our Facebook or Instagram. Are we, we have four openings? So we need to, how, we have petitions. I know Richard Esman is getting a petition.
I'm going to be running again. And I also have a friend who would be a fantastic addition.
Perfect. They need to get, theirs petitions here at the library. They need to get a petition and start getting signatures. I believe they're due in August, what, 20th, which is right around the corner. People start going away on vacation. Anyone who has a petition, get, get an extra three, four, or five signatures. You never know. Just get a couple of extra signatures. Okay? Okay, great. And then we should keep blasting it on Facebook and Instagram. Yeah, and maybe the recorder. We could ask them to do a little blurb. Okay? Great. Thank you. Okay, new business? Anyone new business? Nope. Okay, moving right along. Public remarks? Anyone? Nope. Okay, well, if there's no public remarks, Richard, thank you very much for coming. We're going to break literally for three minutes and then go into executive session. Thank you.